Here we go. All right, so our last and final option, option three, exploring water partnerships. So as we talked about putting together this workshop, one of the pieces of homework that we did, Alex and I went and talked to quite a few of our neighbors. We wanted to get a sense of where are they at with this conversation? Where are the heads at? Where is their future of water supply? And what are the things that they're concerned about? So the communities we talked to are circled in red. Highland Park, Northbrook, Wanaka, and Lemet. They are all water producers as well. They all have intakes up at the lake. Lincolnshire we talked to because they are purchasers of water. They buy their water from Highland Park. So we wanted to get a perspective as a community who buys water from somebody else. What are their thoughts and concerns about water supply as well? So some of the things we talked to them about, we wanted to understand what were their historical investments into their plants? What's their current capacity? And what are their current operations look like? Who are their customers? What are their challenges? What are their future segments? What are the big things that they have on their docket? What have been their funding sources for these big projects throughout the year? And then obviously, we talked about our emergency interconnects. So I've mapped out here who is providing who with water. And you know, so Highland Park, they're providing to Deerfield, Lincolnshire, Bannockburn. Northbrook has water they're supplying to Riverwoods, Michigan Hills. We supply water for ourselves. Wanaka provides water to Northfield. And then Lemet and Evanston both have much larger distribution systems. Lemet provides to Landview, Kinnaworth, Prospect Heights, and Gulf. And Evanston is one of the larger producers in this historic region. They provide to Northwest Water Commission, which is a huge subset of communities that I'm not listing, but also Scopi, Lake Wood Isles, and Morton Grove. The biggest takeaway from this is we're the only ones who are supplying water just for ourselves. We do not have anybody we're providing water to, and that's not a funding source for us when we're looking at the future of our water supply. Some of the big takeaways from the conversations that we had, though, overall with our neighbors is that all of our neighbors who produce water, so Highland Park, Northbrook, Wanaka, and Lemet, they all have additional capacities. You remember at the beginning of the presentation, we talked about water projections and the demand going down? So in the historical upgrades and, you know, expanding plant capacity, all of those projections have kind of fallen short. And now they have the ability to produce more water than they're actually producing right now. And so they all have additional capacity. The exception is Wanaka. I mean, not that they don't have additional capacity, but they don't have enough to take us on, to provide us water. And then other big trend in these conversations is that all of our neighbors are dealing with large CIP projects, large investments, not only in their water plant production, but also within their distribution system. So we are not unique to the fact that we're looking at these really large projects as a water producer and in our distribution system. That's something that all of our neighbors are doing. So some of the considerations we should be looking at if we want to purchase water from a neighbor. We need to look at the infrastructure that would be required to be built in order to purchase water. So we would want to look at building transmission lines to supply us with water and do it in a way that would fit our distribution system. The smart way to do it would be have dual connections. You don't want to just have one feed because if something happens to that main, then we're in trouble. So you would have a dual transmission connection. We'd also have to look at pumping stations and additional storage. And then obviously, the decommissioning of our water plant if that's where purchasing water from a neighbor. We'd also want to look at the rate at which our neighborhood would provide us water. I know one of the questions from 2015 was, you know, if we purchased water from a neighbor, could we lock in a 50-year rate? I didn't ask any of our neighbors that question, but I think the answer is no. And because of, I mean, one of the big reasons is they're going to change the water rate that they charge their customers based on the CIP projects that they need to complete, right? And that changes. It's dynamic as they go through the years. That just means as soon as we start purchasing water from a neighbor, we don't really have any control over what that rate is and what CIP projects they're going to complete and how they're running their plant operations, right? We're just subject to their decisions that they're making. And then, as I had said before, we still maintain our distribution systems. Those costs still stay the same. But it does eliminate the responsibility that we would hold as a water producer, which is a lot of responsibility. So I want to talk about, these are just high-level concepts. These are not studied engineering designs. But if we were to purchase water from Highland Park, there's, you know, a potential that we could run two different mains along Lake Road and Green Bay Road to connect to them. Those would be our transmission mains, the dual transmission mains. There'd probably be a pumping station that they're connecting. We'd have to look at additional storage.
Those don't exist now. So these lines don't exist. We would be digging up Green Bay Road, laying a lot of money.
So Highland Park, in their water production, they switched to membrane filtration in 2015. They're designed for 30 million gallons a day of water production. In our conversations, they made it clear that they have the capacity to take us on as a customer. We didn't go into detail in most conversations, but it is the door that is open to us that we could look into being a customer of Highland Park. Our neighbor to the west, Northbrook, the two potential connections could be, one along Dundee Road, and then we do have that existing connection of the 16-inch main under the lagoons that runs up to our water tower. There's a connection there as well. But again, you know, so the dual connection, we may have to look at a pumping station and storage. One of the things, though, that has kind of changed, I think, if you've driven along Dundee Road out by Northbrook, you'll see that they're currently doing a CIP project where they're investing in that transmission main along Dundee. So that would obviously help the conversation or help the amount of infrastructure we would need. And we also have planned in our CIP a Dundee Phase One and Two improvement. So overall, that Dundee connection is looking like more of a possibility to help provide us with water. Northbrook uses conventional filtration, just like we do for their water plant. They're currently rated for 20 million gallons per day and again, have that additional capacity. They actually, at their plant right now, have two filter beds that are not even online. So they're built, they're there, they're not even in use. That's how much capacity that they have. And the site that their plant sits on actually has room to grow as well. So in my mind, Northbrook's kind of, they're sitting pretty as far as, you know, having land available and having additional capacity. They have two raw water intakes. They are unique in the fact that they are one of the only water producers that do not have lakefront property. They're one of, they're like the only inland water production municipalities. But both of their intakes go through Lemet. So the one goes through our golf course, and there's another one that goes along Lake Wood Road. The last one, so we talked about our neighbor to the south, Wanaka, cannot provide us, don't have the capacity to provide us with water. So even further south, Lemet, they have suggested that if we wanted to install a transmission main along Comette Rightaway next to Evans, that would be a viable option. So again, it's about three and a half miles. So it would be about 12 miles of transmission main. But we'd have to look at, you know, all the infrastructure that goes along with that. They also do conventional filtration. They also have plenty of additional storage to take us on as a customer. They have a capacity of 44 MGD, and they have dual raw water intakes as well.
Do any of these plants have the capacity should Wanaka also want to jump?
That's a good question.
That's a lot of questions. And the other one is, do they?
I think only Lemet would have that much.
Well, and a lot of it is proximity to them.
Because it's more than Lemet, because they provide for Northfield as well. So I think Lemet has a 12 MGD plant, if my memory serves, 12 or 14. So yeah, I think, I think at this point, Lemet is likely directly on Lemet's larger than them.
Do we know with these other treatment plants, how their PFO levels and those testing results, how they compare to ours? And with the new legislation, what they're thinking?
They're all very similar. I mean, we're all taking water from the same place. We talked to them about, yeah, what their testing levels they're at, within the similar range and varying from that detectable to anything below.
Same quality?
Same quality, yeah. I think the biggest differentiator between these options is Highland Park is membrane filtration. Another big differentiator between these three options is Northbrook. Their plant was built in 1960, period. It's the newest of them. Well, Highland Park and Lemet have plants that are along the lakefront, similar to ours, and of similar age. So I thought it was interesting, you know, we talk about how our plant is nearing its 100-year anniversary. Going into this, I was kind of curious what other municipalities had thought about this like doomsday age of a water plant, you know, where it's going to just crumble to the ground. Nobody's thinking that, right? I mean, it's old, but as long as they're well-maintained and invested in, these water production plants are not just going to fall apart. It's just going to require constant maintenance. And so, you know, talking to Wanaka, Lemet, and Park, who have these old water plants, they do have robust CIP plans where they plan to continually invest in these plants, you know, to provide the longevity that they're going to need to serve their community.
Or have already done so. I mean, Highland Park's water plant, for all intents and purposes, was completely rebuilt, you know, in the same, in the same envelope way, you know, 10 years ago.
But it's outside infrastructure is still, you know, the same. And I think that kind of speaks to what we're grappling with. And our current CIP is, you know, too unaffordably.
I don't know if you've raised this. I know the village talked to Highland Park in 2015 about maybe being a partner. So, and Highland Park, you know, they were interested. Has anyone talked to?
We haven't talked to anyone about anything formally other than getting information. We didn't, we didn't want to begin to have those conversations before we had this conversation. I think there is, there's no doubt that what Highland Park was asked was, could Lemet become an equity partner? The counter question to that is, what do you raise to the table that we don't already have? And the answer is not a lot.
Money, capital.
But, right, but they also have four other customers. So these are, and I think we can certainly broach those questions, the likelihood that any of them are looking for a partner is low. The likelihood that any of them are looking for a wholesale customer is very high.
No, I, I, I get, it's just a different, you know...
I'm just, I'm just pointing it out for reference.
Listen, I totally understand. Historically, among Lemet's mistakes, it was blown off Northbrook back in the day. What is my goal during my tenure here, the way the cause might screw up? It would be lovely to go back to Northbrook and say, okay, we were wrong. We've been bringing a lot of capital. We've been bringing expertise. We've had a lot, you know. I assume the answer might be no, but...
And I want to caveat that we haven't engaged in those conversations for a very good reason. We're not ready to.
Right.
And what we wanted to share today was just simply information that there are partners around us that have some capacity. I think those conversations are worth having. I think the understanding of where their, where their plans actually are from a timeline and political standpoint as well. I worked for Northbrook for five years. I'm well, I'm quite familiar with that water facility, and I'm also very familiar with the fact that they have capacity that they love to utilize. And that's why they're selling to Riverwoods and others, because that expansion, those conversations were happening. But to Monica's point a long time ago, there's, there's a lot of water need as you get three to five communities west of Northbrook and Highland Park. And getting water from those places to the next round of places is complicated and expensive. And we'll talk about that, but maybe a good segue into the broader regional.
One thing that differentiates us, so that we're not just capital, let's say, Northbrook, is we're also not the same level of desperate as somebody who's not on the lake. That is, we can say, okay, one of our options is to invest in our plant, which will do unless we can make an appropriate deal with you, which will use your extra capacity, but we want to be equity, you know, in a recent effort to provide control. Is that happening? Probably not, but it's, you know, something we can say that Riverwoods doesn't have to say.
And I'm not taking it off the table. I'm just saying, we haven't had those conversations.
I'm also just wondering, so how was the Leamet community without its own water plant?
It had one until about 60.
When it needed it.
And they, they started buying from Lemet at that point in time because they were facing significant investments and they're sold their facility that only served their community.
Yeah, if we go to, you can actually see, this was kind of the worst intake that was still in that map. But yeah, I mean, they, that...
And if you go like further north along the shoreline, is it everywhere?
Like Forest has their own, and then Lake Bluff, actually, there's a, there's a Lake County Joint Action Water Agency, Central Lake County, CLC, that, there's a large facility in Lake Bluff that pushes water west throughout most of central Illinois.
Probably is the one, too.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, so, I mean, it was really, I think, helpful and productive conversations that we had with all of our neighbors. You know, we talked about one of the big major investments into the plant would be to create a redundant raw water intake. Highland Park, Wanaka, and Lemet all talked about that and their future CIP plans as well. The fact that they're going to have to either update one of theirs, expand the capacity of, you know, one of theirs, I think even Northbrook, who has the newest raw water intakes, they're dealing with some stability issues in one of their intakes because of the volatility of the Lake Michigan levels. And so they're looking into that as well. So it's just, I'm just trying to point out, I mean, there are so many similarities between us and everybody else. The one thing that we don't have is somebody who we're selling water to to help fund our CIP projects. So I think with this, I'm going to pass it over to Phil to talk about kind of the history behind 2015 and those water partnership opportunities that we had, and then a water partnership opportunity that we're kind of in the middle of the conversation right now.
Yeah, thanks, Monica. And I, you know, we alluded to this as we walked through the presentation this morning more than once. If we take ourselves back to 2012 or so, the village was approached at that time by the Northwest Water Commission. Northwest Water Commission is a joint water agency that consists of four communities. It's Arlington Heights, Palatine, Buffalo Grove, and New Lake. I think between them, they have something like 350,000 customers, or 350,000 people that are served. I don't remember the total number of customers. They've historically and had historically been customers of the city of Evanston and had constructed a large transmission main from Evanston up to a treatment facility, a pumping facility. They were purchasing finished water from Evanston in unincorporated displanes. And from that site, water was distributed out to the four communities. They approached Lemet in 2012 with the idea of a couple of different ideas. One was to access Lake Michigan through Lemet. That would provide a, essentially, an intake line that would go west to a new treatment plant that they constructed, near to their current pumping facility and unincorporated displanes. As a component of that, there were discussions that got underway about the possibility of Lemet being a partner in that, being a customer to that, being somehow related to that effort. And in doing so, significantly reduce the potential cost of a plant upgrade or replacement. What was discussed was a couple of different things. The potential of them building a small Lemet-sized water treatment facility on the lakeshore as a component of their, their intake line, or that we would build the entire plant potentially in Lemet somewhere. That one fell off the map pretty quickly because, as we've talked about before, not a whole lot of available property in the community and, but there were discussions about the possibility of a new treatment facility that would just serve Lemet as a component of those negotiations. And it went so far as, the 2015 study was really a response to understanding the alternatives that we may want to pursue as a, as a part of that partnership. It was a contentious discussion with the community because there were, there were issues between the village and the park district relative to the potential sighting of where that plant might go. There were discussions about the use of the Pearlman Boating Beach, which is just to the north of the current water treatment plant. That would allow the new facility be built there, and then the old facility would be decommissioned and removed. And as those conversations were going on, the Northwest Water Commission was continuing to negotiate with the city of Evanston and ultimately elected to sign a new agreement with the city of Evanston. And so the possible partnership with Lemet at that point with the Northwest Water Commission went away. To some degree unbeknownst to Lemet until a couple of years ago, another, another water agency that exists much further west, the DuPage Water Commission, had been reviewing options to them. DuPage Water Commission serves 30 communities in, in DuPage County and beyond. It was formed in the early 1990s as they were, all of those communities getting off of well water and aquifer water. They are customers of the city of Chicago, in fact, the largest customer of the city of Chicago. And there is a large transmission main that they constructed that moves through the middle of the city, essentially under 55, and takes that finished water from the city of Chicago to a pumping station in Allenhurst. Actually, incidentally, the only part of Allenhurst that's in Cook County, just that just kind of cute thing that they serve DuPage County, but they have their pumping facility in Cook. So they are, they have been in negotiations with the city of Chicago to some degree perpetually relative to their water agreements and have been frustrated by the city of Chicago. One of the things we didn't talk about, Monica, if you want to hop back up to one more, hop on, keep on, this, this. So one of the reasons that a lot of these, especially Evanston, has a number of other communities that they are serving, is that about 20 years ago, the mayor of Chicago started to change the water rate structure for their wholesale customers and significantly, and embarked on a plan to significantly increase the cost of finished water to many of their wholesale customers in the suburban area. Lincolnwood Isles and Morton Grove, who now buy from Evanston, were historically Chicago customers. And as those cost increases were being rolled out to Chicago customers, they were finding it unsustainable and began looking at alternatives that they might seek from purchasing water for the city of Chicago. So fast forwarding to DuPage, DuPage has had similar frustrations with, with the city, which came to a head to some degree in the last few years as the city of Chicago inked a new deal with Joliet to provide Joliet Lake Michigan water finished in Chicago. That deal is, has been signed. Joliet is expected to come online, I believe, in 2030. And the rate structure that was agreed to was significantly less than the rate structure that many of the largest wholesale customers were paying to the city of Chicago, which to which they took some umbrage. It, to some degree, reignited these long-time discussions that DuPage had been having about possible alternatives to purchasing finished water from Chicago and brought back some ideas that they had been floating in 2016 through 2018 about finding an alternative source to Lake Michigan that did not include potentially having to travel through the city of Chicago proper to get to the lake. So they approached Lemet along with another partner, the North Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Agency, which is a organization of, another water agency that consists, I believe, of nine municipalities, including Schaumburg, Hoffa Estates, and others in that general area, Elk Grove, Streamwood, who are also purchasing water from the city of Chicago. And both of them have begun a conversation about the possibility of partnering together to construct their own treatment facility that would serve essentially a population of about a million and a half, so a large population. They have looked at this from the standpoint of significant belief that DuPage County and west of DuPage is poised for significant economic growth. As climate change continues, Lake Michigan continues to be an attractive source of water for certain industries that are water reliant, particularly those that may exist in the continental United States and southwest continental United States. And they have looked at their own growth from the standpoint of residential growth and other needs and have sought to consider alternatives, given the fact that Chicago's water rate structure doesn't seem to work well for their long-term projections, and they have not been able to dialogue with Chicago about a renewed rate structure negotiation. So why Lemet? Why is this even in part of our conversation this morning? It is because they have approached us from the standpoint of being willing to have conversations around the idea of accessing Lake Michigan through this community and running that water, which would be raw water, west to a to-be-determined site that they would construct a 350 to 400 million gallon per day plant treatment facility that would distribute water to their customer base in DuPage County and Northwest Cook County. Where that plant is located is a question mark that hasn't been answered. Where that plant is located is a question mark that hasn't been answered. But what they have done, and the study is extensive and is available on their website and has been publicly discussed, is, you know, a multi-billion dollar investment that would include essentially an underground tunnel that would transport water dozens of miles underneath Dundee Road, right, I dot right, upwards of a 72 to 84 inch pipe, six to seven foot wide pipe that would transport water. So, a big one. We talked about our largest being 16 inches, it gives you a bit of context. So, we are not sure what this necessarily means for Glencoe. We are not sure whether this is an opportunity or not. Certainly, you know, as we talk about the feasibility of something like this, you're talking about a public works project that is likely to be the largest ever undertaken in Illinois, that would require legislative authority to continue, and that has a runway of 15 to 17 years from today to when they turn water on at a plant. That being said, the DuPage Water Commission is very serious about it. They recently exercised an extension to their current Chicago contract for 17 years. It's an important number, as I just said, the runway for this project is 15 to 17 years. They fully anticipate commencing work to study the possible locations for a treatment facility and a possible entry into Lake Michigan. And I say that as a, I think is an important thing for us to be aware of and to consider as we contemplate a variety of options that we've talked about today. What does it mean for Glencoe? It certainly could mean a few things. It could mean some level of partnership that would provide a funding source. It could mean some level of partnership that depending upon the location of a treatment facility could be a source of water for us, and anywhere in between. But regional partnerships like this don't come around every day. While we have had the conversation about a decade ago with Northwest Water Commission, this one is much more baked than that one was in terms of the possibility. And so, you know, is it likely to happen? It's hard to say. There's a lot of hurdles. But they, at this point, appear to be committed to moving forward with the analysis in the study. We've had a few meetings and conversations with them about what that means, and at this point, you know, the information is not very well laid out. I think there's a lot of interesting conversations still to come as to what this could mean. But it is something that is, I think, worth understanding and understanding the impact to us. I should say what I didn't mention. This transmission main is expected to exist 100 to 200 feet below the surface of whatever roadway they are constructing it under. When I say tunneling, it is. Think Big Dig, think Channel Tunnel type operations. There's a fascinating PowerPoint presentation that they provided several months back with these tunneling, this tunneling equipment that essentially would, you know, be so far underground, you wouldn't even know they're there. So, it's a little space age, perhaps, it feels, but engineering is pretty amazing, as many of you in the room understand. And I think there's, there are always ways of accomplishing something.
See, I think so right now, they're buying treated water from Chicago.
Correct.
So they're talking about completely changing that because they're talking about that.
Well, they're talking about at least augmenting the purchase of treated water from Chicago significantly. They're not necessarily saying they would shut off their current pipeline, that they would still have that as a component of redundancy into their system, and that it's possible that it would augment what their new capacity would accommodate so that they could see growth much further out into the future.
So they're trying to figure out what their motivations are. Is it cost, is it growth? So, and control.
Yeah, and control, because what they're also aware of is, we've talked about the Jardine Plant. At the end of their current contract with the city of Chicago, the Jardine Plant will be about 75 years old. Chicago's already begun to signal that they will be anticipating their wholesale customers will be a significant partner or participant in the cost to upgrade that facility, which is expected to be in the $2 to $5 billion range. And I think their argument that they've said publicly is that if we're going to spend, if we're going to be on the hook to spend billions of dollars, we'd like to control what we're spending billions of dollars on at the end of it. So, I think that's been part of their, it's really cost, opportunity for growth and control that they have looked at. So again, what does it mean for Glencoe? It's to some degree hard to say. It could be a great opportunity. It's not without its question marks, it's not without its concerns. I think the, based off of what we've heard so far, the physical impact, the visible impact, if you will, would be somewhat minimal. A lot of this is anticipated to be gravity-driven, so water flowing downhill from the lake all the way to a certain point where it's where a pump would engage. There would probably be a small treatment facility just from a zebra muscle and other type of situation that would be required to be near the shore to accommodate that. But otherwise, we don't have a lot of plants. We don't, we don't know. They are in the process of updating their current plans with their engineering firm, and we anticipate that that'll be done sometime in the next month or two. But they, they've taken action, their board has taken action. Again, this is a board that represents 30 municipalities and growing. It's not just DuPage County, they've now expanded into the southern Fox River Valley as well with Oswego and Montgomery and Yorkville. And again, to some degree, Monica's point way far back about Illinois' allocation for water, being, having some capacity, there's, I think, they're looking at that as an opportunity relative to this too. As water sources change in the western part of northern Illinois, I think they're also anticipating that wells and aquifers are going to become less and less the source of choice, rivers being added into that as well. So, all of that being said, it's a very interesting prospect that requires a lot of time and thought and may augment any number of decisions that the village of Glencoe may make on a going-forward basis. It may not change anything that the village board or the community ultimately elects to move forward with, with our own plant, but it could offer an alternative as to how we provide water. So, again, we're waiting to hear back from them, there's more information to be developed. I'm not speaking out of school, almost all of this has been published in newspaper articles. Glencoe has been mentioned in those articles. And again, I think they are, they're treating this as their preferred plan on a going-forward basis. And when I say their preferred plan, whether that's through Glencoe or elsewhere, I think finding a path to their own production opportunity is really their primary goal.
Yeah, I think just one point I want to add to everything Phil so greatly explained with this ongoing conversation is that right now, we are part of the conversation. In a couple months, in a year or two, we might not be a part of that conversation depending on the ultimate location of where they're planning to put the water treatment plant. So it's easy to look at this and say, wow, this could be so great for our future of our water supply, and this could be such an advantage to help us navigate these decisions. But it's still a really big question, and we have to keep it in mind as long as it is still a possibility. But at the same time, it's a little risky to put too much weight on this opportunity. We just don't know how solid it is. And as we progress, we'll learn more. You know, if they pick a location where we know that Glencoe's part of the picture, okay, that gives it a little bit more, you know, of a weight to it where this could be an opportunity for us. But it's still just a very big question mark as we proceed forward.
Well, and with projects this big and with, again, a runway this long, there's a lot of things that can change along the way. And I think we're very eyes wide open from that standpoint, that even 10 years down, after perhaps hundreds of millions of dollars have already been spent, they could change direction depending upon a series of impacts that perhaps are unknown even today. So, we bring it up today just again to say that it's an alternative, it's a partnership opportunity perhaps, with a lot of question marks attached to it still at this point.
So Phil and I went out and talked to these folks in Allenhurst. Let me go back and say, so I wasn't involved in this back in 2015, I think none of us were, I think Phil and you may have found.
I was, yes.
We were talking to DuPage Water Commission. After that crash had burned.
Northwest Water.
Northwest Water Commission. After that crash had burned, people had the impression that we were just, it was sort of faked and they were using us to negotiate with Evanston. We do not think that about this. They seem too angry, they're paying too much money, they can see paying too much money. That still doesn't mean it's happening, but we think they're serious. And there are, if Glencoe were able to participate, it's not easy to turn that participation into, you know, nirvana. There are limits on, we can't just charge for the water coming out of the lake that's prohibited. But as Phil and I were leaving the meeting ahead with the outfit, we walked in the car and he said, you know, we're working on things that we could give you guys. So they're serious. Doesn't mean it's happening, doesn't mean that even if they want to act, that it would happen because there are all these other issues and political issues. But it's an opportunity, and we need to figure out how to make the most of it if we can. But one thing we won't do is we're not going to spend a bunch of our money as this is being thought about. We will politely ask them, and this is like beyond, you know, it's, if it doesn't, you know, helping Glencoe study this. We spent Glencoe money back in 2015, like, you know, instead of bad, so we will, you know, ask them about us, so we're not on a platform for their trade.
So what were you saying, so we're not able to charge for raw water, we can't charge for treated?
No, we can't, we can't toll, for instance, the water coming out of the lake.
That's everybody.
Right, because it's not ours. And the fee structure even, you know, the use of right-of-way isn't necessarily something we can license either because of the way statute was drawn, right? The water utilities, ourselves included, have the ability to utilize public rights of way for transmission. So we'd have to look at it from a larger standpoint. And that's, I think they're looking at it not as a, cool, this is a great free option for us. I think they're practical about it.
They would, you know, they're looking for a way to improve us so that they have to be an absolute good friend.
Yeah, sound advice.
And whatever our fee is, and however, one if it turns out for us, it's infinite estimate to their project. They could, they could pay for our water in perpetuity, and they wouldn't notice it. They, you know, because their project is so big. But maybe you won't have it. Maybe the only legislature will say, sorry, we can't let Chicago lose all this revenue they're siphoning off of DuPage and so, it's not it. And they could decide that in year 17. So that's what we have.
In year 17, if we've already gone down this path and we've decided, we make decisions on a real infrastructure basis on that, we have some sort of out clause, maybe we have to play us tax, we get out and we don't build our own park.
Well, you know.
We have some solid lawyers on this. I, I, there's, we absolutely, I don't think it's worth, we're kind of running out of time right now, but I, absolutely, what we would look at, there's a million different what-ifs that go on with this. I think wanting to be as cautious, entering this as cautiously as possible is in everyone's interest, including DuPage Water Commission and an excellent job. They're aware of the risks and limitations that are kind of ahead of them, and we should be too.
Presumably going to make that kind of a decision.
Hopefully not.
Before they start spending money with B.
And we will announce that, okay. This is an opportunity. We know we're not going to, we're going to be as responsible as we can be. We're not going to be pigs because that would, you know, we're not, I don't want us to do something that costs them, if you can't be a part of Glencoe, if they're possible. But we're going to be as thoughtful as we can so you don't look bad 20 years from now if they're covering people doing, which sadly, you know, we can't in some cases.
Is there anything, as we approach discussing home rule, is there anything with our, not starting with home rule, limitations that are which will inhibit the water, like, we shouldn't come taking place?
We have not dove that deeply, but I would say that there is likely some benefit that home rule would provide in dialogue of this magnitude.
We're not talking about that. Yes, but you, that is an excellent question because one of the things that we are researching as part of the home rule research is the village's ability to enter into multi-year contracts, which we are limited in our national capacity, so that may come to play with operations.
I think that's one of the most salient points relative to this.
Thank you.
Okay. So our last topic for today is just talking about the financing of all of these discussions. So, one of the things we want to talk about is our water rates, right? I guess I'll dive into this. We have two tables here. The one to our right is our neighboring water rates for the latest rate of an out. You can see that Glencoe is high on the list, but not the highest. But there's a broad range in rates overall. And I'd like to point out that this is not just water production rates, this is the water production and water distribution rates, it's a combined rate that they're charged, that everyone is charging their residents. And we have, you know, kind of looked at who's selling water to who, and I think it's easy to see that the sellers are all kind of sitting at the bottom there, as far as the water rates go. And the buyers are sitting up closer to the top. But, you know, I think in general, everyone has seen their water rates increase in the past couple of years. Again, a big part of that is the distribution side of those water rates, the cost to cover what municipalities are having to invest into their distribution systems, not necessarily just the water production, water plant. The other table is the history of unclosed water rates back to 2006. So in 2019, we did a water rate analysis, which is why it's highlighted in red there. You can see a big jump, the 26.2%. A big part of that was because we introduced a fixed rate for our water circuits, our water meter size. So that's why there's a So that's why there's a big jump there. When we did the water rate study, we changed our rate structure. You can see prior to that relatively low water cost, relatively low percent increases over the years. But since we did that study in 2019, we've had a more consistent, higher water rate increase to help pay for all the investment that we're currently providing into our system, both at the water plant and within our distribution system. So just want to kind of give you guys an overview of where we sit water rate wise. And honestly, we're not alone in any of the situation, like I said, of historically undercharging for water and now having to increase our water rates. Who knows what this survey will bring in the next couple of years and where we'll sit. But we are, it's something we are keeping an eye on of, you know, where we're sitting as far as our water rates in front of others. We don't really want to be the top of the list. One of the things I'd like to say though in regards to water rates and the future of our water supply, I think in our conversations, it's been tempting to look at this from a purely financial aspect and say, well, let's just analyze all three of our options and look at which one provides the lowest water rate to our customers and that's how we'll decide. But I think, and I hope you guys have taken away from this, is that it's kind of a bigger decision than just that. There's more that goes into this decision on our future of our water supply than just the bottom rate. Although it is a very big part of it and it's going to impact us, but I think understanding of how we want to move forward with our water supply is bigger than just the now or near-term water rate for our residents. So while it's important and it's definitely something we're looking at, I guess it is a question of do we want that to be our bottom line and how we make this decision. I'm going to then turn it over to Nikki to just talk about how we might look at financing some of the options that we talked about today and what that's going to look like for future stuff.
So one thing I would just add to that previous summary is that the water rate study was actually done prior to 2019, but that was when we actually changed the structure of what we were charging. In that year, you could see a 26.2% jump in our water rate. And that was done because historically we were not covering the cost of what we needed to invest in our water system. So we've tried to adhere to that water rate study, which was largely studied, largely focused on distribution improvements. We've had a number of changes that have happened to our capital plants since that happened. Phil and I did a nice job of outlining that, the largest being the relocation of the water treatment or the water tower. But the water treatment plant was never anticipated on these rates, nor is it for the initial projections. So you're probably wondering how we made a for all of us, and I wish I could answer that question for you, and that's not what this slide is about. I think the common theme that we see throughout the presentation today is that there are a lot of unanswered questions and very similar to how it's difficult to take patterns out of the water that we can measure, it's also very difficult to predict how we will pay for something that we don't know what the ultimate cost is. That being said, we do have a number of financing opportunities or options at our disposal. The first of which being water revenue bonds. We have not historically used water revenue bonds. These are designed to be fully backed by water revenue, meaning that the water treatment plant would have to generate enough revenue to sustain that type of loan. The problem with these types of bonds is that if there is insufficient revenue, you cannot pull from other sources to pay them back. So there is a chance of default, which drives up the interest rate. Because from an investor's standpoint or a loan's standpoint, that's seen as a higher risk type of loan. That being said, the bonus of these is that you can issue them without a referendum. So if we were to have an emergency that we didn't have funding for set up or a referendum timeline set up, or we could issue us that anytime. The other option, let me go a little bit out of order. Low interest I P loans are also an option. This was last issued by the village in 2011 on a 20-year, $3 million issue for water distribution improvements. These are attractive because they can sometimes carry rates lower than 2%, which depends on what interest market is. When we look at water capital financing, we analyze all of these options at our disposal to determine where we might be able to get the lowest interest rate. The village is a significant advantage because we are AAA rated and we've not gone to would because our rating is currently under review. But we have historically in recent years been able to obtain interest rates sub 2% because interest rates were at such low rates for such a long period of time. So we haven't gone back to the I P A loan because we haven't needed to. When we're looking at a larger dollar amount, that may be something attractive to us as we can talk about some of these larger projects. Moving down the line, the other financing opportunity for us is general obligation bonds. Those are, those come in two different types. The first of which is an alternate revenue bond. This is what the village has historically used for our water infrastructure improvements. It's commonly called a double barrel bond because they are first and foremost look and act like a revenue bond in that they're designed to be sustained by the water fund. So the revenue generated by the water treatment plant is aggregated in that fund and used to pay back those funds. If we have a sustained period of flood seasons and irrigation rolls back and you see revenue drop, or if we had some other type of catastrophic event where we weren't able to make those debt service payments, those bonds are legally structured such that we could enact an emergency property tax levy on our residents to repay that debt. Because you have that feature, those bonds are essentially walk and talk with a general obligation bond. They carry the full faith and credit of the village and they're seen as a very secure vehicle because you have two avenues in which you can repay. That's typically what we use. They often carry interest rates similar to Geo bonds. Our last few issuances were 1.8% and 3% in terms of interest rate. Now, I would caution you, that was in a different interest rate of the market.
Those are the days.
Watching the news, a few things have changed. So that is something that we have to watch. The other benefit of an alternate revenue bond is that because it carries that revenue bond name, we also have the luxury of issuing those at any time. It does not require a referendum. If we were in a situation where we issued an alternate revenue bond and we had to enact that double barrel backstop, it sounds like a really bad word, but you're essentially enacting a backdoor referendum. At that point, a levy would be appreciated. The other option on a general obligation bond would be a referendum bond, similar to how we funded street equipment, stormwater improvements, essentially anything that's not managed by an enterprise fund, which in the village, for us, that means water for Gulf. This is identical to what we are doing with the Gulf Club project. We would require a referendum where the question would be asked by the community, the community would approve or deny, and then we would move forward with the bond on sale for the money. The tricky part, we had other conversations about this, on a referendum bond is it carries restrictions with time frames. So it literally strips you of any ability to time the market because from the time you decide you're going to issue a general obligation bond to the time the money is in your bank account, you have at least a three-month delay, if not longer. You cannot time the market in terms of interest rates, which has become extremely important because it's not so important five years ago when interest rates were at record lows for a extended period of time, but now just the wider market conditions we've seen, that is a significant advantage that you can, when you can get in the market, you can get it on time. So that's also another option. In that case with a referendum bond, those bonds would be repaid through property taxes. These carry low interest rates, similar to the alternate revenue bonds, seen as having the full faith and credit of the village behind it, which you can levy a tax and essentially assess that it's going to be a paying route. Those bonds are attached essentially as means to every home in the community and that guarantees the repayment. It's very attractive for investors. When we sell them, we typically issue it through an auction. It's a very competitive market. Banks like to have these in their portfolios as tax shelters because they're taxes, not bonds. So we typically yield very low interest rates. Even in a high interest rate now, we've been able to obtain less than four, which doesn't sound great, but it is, it is great for right now. In more recent past years, we've been able to obtain Geo bonds at sub 2%. So that's an attractive financing option for us. With any of these loans, with any of these options, we do have to take into account the affordability. To Monica's point, we certainly don't want to make decisions based solely on finances, but we also don't want to charge water rates at $25 just off the charts. So repayment is certainly a consideration that we have to take into account, whether it's through the property tax bill or it's for water use charges as well. I know there was some talk about irrigation and the impact of our water treatment plant. That's also something to keep in mind as we move forward. If we were ever to consider a water rate structure that would encourage scaling back water usage or scaling back irrigation, that also goes into the finances of the water plant. Essentially, when you implement rates like that, it's designed to change behavior and what that will happen is usually there's a significant discount offered for using less water. And what that means is there's less water revenue coming into the water plant. So it's kind of a catch 22 where it's wonderful for the environment, math grade from a financing standpoint. I don't mean to sound callous in that, it's just the math of it. Going forward, from a rate increase to Monica's standpoint, we need to maintain our distribution system regardless of the option that is chosen. So what we will see going forward, our future water increases, the magnitude of those won't be ultimately dependent on what we can sustain going forward and what options chosen for the water treatment plant. We do, in this year's calendar budget, have an additional updated water rate study planned. We were kind of hitting pause on that depending on kind of the discussion that we had here today in terms of the scope and what we would be looking at going forward. But as you brought up earlier, our strand study is a little bit outdated. We have gone astray from that. So now it's kind of a time to take a look at, do we reset the water rates where they need to be in terms of what we are now planning for going forward. So there may be a component to this water rate study that involves taking a look at our infrastructure priorities because we have to because they've changed. Let's see. The last point I wanted to make about home rule impacts, to a point that was just brought up, rate policy. A great point that we may be potentially limited in what type of environmental agreements that we can enter into. There are certain restrictions on a non-home rule unit that you can only enter into certain agreements that cannot extend with the rate of the term of the British precedent. So when we're looking at water structures, some of these improvements can last 20, 40, 50 years. That's important in keeping that in mind as well. The other piece that impacts the financing is that as a national home rule unit, we are issued to borrowing in terms of 20 or 20 plus. This is a tricky, a tricky limitation because a lot of our assets can last 50 years. We're approaching a 100-year extension under our treatment plan. So timing the investment of the expenditure of funds, repayment of that loan, you essentially are front-loading that debt burden on the residents today. When you have residents of the future that are very, benefiting from those investments, it could be 30, 50 years beyond the initial investment and they're not paying for that backup. So that is kind of a tricky, tricky thing that we have to think of when we're talking about some of these large investments. Extending our debt 30 years or longer could certainly lighten the cash flow burden on the water plant. It would allow us to make other improvements in accordance with our senior state of care and winter. Just to give you an idea of magnitude, if we were borrowing $10 million and we were able to extend that debt, that would lower our debt payment about $200,000 a year, which would just be additional cash flow that we would have on hand to help manage the entire system. So it is, I wish I had kind of a crystal ball and I could give you a few more options, but these are just things that we have to consider as we think about financing going forward.
Happy to answer your questions, whatever you're opening for discussion.
That's our last slide. Yeah, we were, we were always going to use that if we could. We want to talk about it, we can. It was just a wonder.
Just an app, right? Yeah.
I ran ahead, sorry.
So I guess, you know, one of my big questions as we move forward and talk about next steps is what else do we, the village, need to evaluate as we try to look at the future of our water supply? Are there topics that we didn't cover today that we should, are there ideas that we need to explore further? Again, decision today, but this is both, these are the conversations that we're hoping this prompts. And so if you feel like there's something that we need to look into, that would call them a feedback or comment, this is a big discussion and we want to be as welcome forward as we can and we wanted to make sure that we're providing you guys with information.
I think another aspect that, you know, we're preparing for is, you know, what does this look like for the fiscal '25 budget? What does this look like for the CIP in the short term? By that, I mean the next 10 years really. We've talked a little bit about updating the distribution system analysis, we've talked about updating the rates, the rate structure. Those two pieces are important. And I would say, you know, depending on some of the alternatives that we've talked about today, maybe the smaller of the investments that we're ultimately making in the water utility, right, as a whole. And we know that there are a number of things we talked about today that we don't have enough information on yet to be able to really speak to with certainty by structures around some of those investments that we talked about with respect to just our plant. We talked about at staff level, right? Some of those things are going to have to happen regardless of whether that plant is decommissioned in 15 years or not because it has to be operational until the day it's not. And so we also recognize that that may mean that there are investments that are made late in the life of the existing operation or as we transition to a different, whatever that may be, that may feel like a, you know, money out the window, but are still important investments. And we haven't really, we haven't noodled that out as well as I think you all want to. And I think some of this is, it's just a lot, right? It's a lot, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of information, it's a lot to consider because what we're talking about isn't something that we're all, our successors are all going to be talking about, you know, 15 or 20 years from now as a refurbishment probably. We're talking about what our successors, hopefully 70 or 80 years from now, are talking about as the next major round of water and what does that mean? Because at the end of the day, Glencoe's responsibilities to its residents are many things and water is always within the top three. So it's not going to be something that, oh, finally we're finished with this, we don't ever have to worry about it. It's going to come back every year. So, you know, I think as we sat down and started talking about this meeting. So, you know, I think as we sat down and started talking about this meeting, we were saying, it's a lot for us even to just try to put down into a, into a summary of how to talk about it. And we recognize that as you're all hearing this, sometimes, some of you for the first time, some of you, it's, it's a, it's a repeat of some of this information. You may have, you may have the need to kind of sit with it a bit yourselves and come back to us and say, you know, when we talked about that thing, I really wish we had more information on X so that that would help us to understand. So Monica's point of, you know, tell us what you need, we're not saying you have to do that in this sitting either. This is gonna be an ongoing discussion. I anticipate we're gonna have another conversation in advance of the budget process, which will start, you know, this fall. And as things progress, even with partnership opportunities, that is, that is something that we will, I will, I would expect we're gonna be coming back to you with information. A question relative, that is perhaps more direct. Is it worth our time to have perhaps more structured conversations with some of our neighbors about partnership opportunities and how they would see those and how we might see them? Obviously, we've talked about what you have and what could you do. That's a very different conversation about would you want to. So that may be my, my one specific question for you, or if you're saying, you know what, it's too early for that, let's get some more data. But I think that might be helpful data as we're building out other big sets.
So let me, I'll give my answer. I don't wanna spook anybody, but it may be our decision, if there were an option to be not a customer, but a partner, that would be a more real option. I mean, I think, I don't think any of us wanna preside over Blenko dropping out of the run with. We may, you know, maybe that hasn't happened. I certainly have not fixed that. So as we decide what to do, I think talking to our neighbors and seeing if they might be interested. And we know their first answer, but with a particular, you know, maybe, maybe it was too strong, but it's, you know.
To what extent, though, you can't, you've brought out that we're this giant, potential giant, you mean, our project, I think that's the correct, I can't remember. To what extent would any sort of, other than passing conversations with another potential partner influence in a negative way, they're thinking about us? That's, that would be our Mulholland Golden Ticket potential. And let's say it's not seventeen, let's assume if we think it takes seventeen years, it takes twenty-five or more, we gotta keep our plan going along in the meantime. What, having conversations, it gets serious and it's all open meeting and it's all recorded and it's all this, does that tell the other potential partner, hmm, let's not count on that, let's figure out a alternative instead of, hey, they're eager, let's go.
So let me say, I don't think so because our, the folks out west are not talking to us because we haven't huge water plants. And they're not talking to us because we maintain our distribution system, we're getting a blue water plant. They're talking to us for only one reason, which is we have access to the lake and access to Dundee Road, and that, so that would not change, you know, what I don't think, I mean, we actually would wanna think what, I just don't see that. They're not interested in our water plant, they're not interested in our distribution system, they're interested in our access to the lake and to Dundee Road, which is there. So, so that's, that's, I guess, what I think.
So we would, to take that further, since we've interrupted, to take that further. So that's what we have to offer them no matter what, and the fact that maybe we don't need it as a secondary alternative, if we needed it in our, worst-case alternative, build that straw coming back in the middle of your giant pipe, if we had to turn it on, but we don't want it, that's, that's neither here nor there to, you know, they can figure out something to do for us that we don't.
Yeah, I think that's what, that's what I feel. That's what I feel.
I think basic geography, that's, that doesn't change. Lots of other things can, that's one that doesn't.
So we would keep telling Hoya, please keep working with us.
Well, I think, well, what I would tell you is that I think we're in a window of time here that means three to probably five or six years, where we're perhaps walking in multiple paths at the same time. The hard part for us that doesn't exist for others is that we don't wanna get so far down a single path that we cannot turn off of it if something changes, right? We have, we have to maintain more flexibility than perhaps many of the other partners or players that we might be talking to because of the nature of what we have available to ourselves. If you've heard nothing from us today, our position is not great. It's difficult. It's very expensive and staying in the water business is going to be a policy discussion that is gonna take some time because of the scale of the investment that we're talking about. Blenko has never invested in anything at this level in its history. So when we talk about it, I am being serious when I say we're talking in hundred-million-dollar investment zones where we have a total ten-year C I P that involves everything that's fifty-five. Right? And so this is just a piece of what we have to talk about. So its scale is somewhat staggering and perhaps that's the problem in our own thinking is that it's so big, it's hard to think about it. But that's where I see this as being multiple conversations happening at the same time in an effort to keep as many options available to us as possible.
Everybody who's right, I feel like we wanna stay with the water. In, in DuPage County, they are paying, from their point of view, huge vast sums to the city of Chicago, to the point where it makes sense to them to get, with this multi-billion-dollar project. And they are paying that because they don't control their, themselves and, you know, we're obviously tiny, but still, if you don't control your water, whoever's controlling it, decide they need the money.
You're right, but we also would have to carry the full burden of the entirety of what we're talking about. And so it is, it's not an apples or oranges comparison, but I-
I totally get it. That's just why we're trying so hard like this.
Exactly.
And, and, you know, it sounds like a two-part plan in which we keep up our water plant, which isn't free, but isn't as ruinously expensive or building a new one, and try to find sources of revenue which maybe we can find.
Can we imagine who else the, the water commissioner and her partner is talking to for their lock-in plan?
Our understanding is that the only path that doesn't involve finding a way through the city of Chicago is this one. Yeah, at this point.
Just curious, have you looked at their water rates that they're charging people in all the western suburbs? I'm just curious.
We haven't gotten to that point.
I mean, I was just wondering, what their perception of the great prices.
I think, I don't wanna speak too much out loud at this point, but I think we have to think about what's been talked about relative to partnership rather than customer.
Yeah.
In that, much more so, and I think that helps to limit the fear factor of what could be versus what we could perhaps lock in more effectively.
Aggregates.
I think some of it, every one of those communities has a different rate structure, right? They have a, what they're charged by the city of Chicago and then every community is, is augmenting that rate structure. Even that rate analysis that we showed you, it's imperfect because it doesn't show what their wholesale rate may be plus whatever capital rate that they're top, you know, putting on top of that. And even, you know, Highland Park, for instance, sells water to Deerfield. Deerfield resells water to Bannock. So you have, you have kind of a-
Totally.
Right? So it's, we have to do more with rate analysis to help answer that question.
That was sound right.
Yep.
Well, I'd like to, maybe reinforce this. This is what I call parallel tracks. You know, we're not pursuing one track, we're doing parallel tracks. And the real challenge for us is, you know, how do we manage this uncertainty? How do we manage this uncertainty? And one way to manage uncertainty is incremental learning, and that's what we're talking about. I think that, you know, to the extent we know that we wanna maintain our standard infrastructure, that sort of decision is, I think, pretty much open. And we have a lot of other options to take a look at and we just have to incremental learn about what the options are and the pluses and minuses and eventually we'll do what I call a global achievement matrix, you know, just compares everything. And, you could assume, but we're not ready to make it assume.
Anybody have anything else? Yep.
Just a point of information, the rate that is currently charged for water, has that sustained the system hold long without tremendous loss or tremendous profit?
This is the water self-funding.
It has been.
Lady Castor, so when we set our water rates, it's a combination of a study that was done, I think, in twenty-seventeen.
Yeah, well, it was, there was, a rate study was done in twenty-seventeen.
Which was based off of our long-term capital plan and if they do a budget as it exists today, every year we prepare the budget, we redo our ten-year capital investment plan and that would include what we have planned for distribution, what we have for water treatment plant. So the rates that we're charging now are designed to both fund what's happening this year and also aggregate fund reserves. And then we do a financing plan for the next ten years using what we have on hand from fund reserves, what we can borrow and what we can sustain in terms of the debt payment to fund the capital plan for the entire ten-year plan. What that doesn't account for is if something changes. So if we have an emergency water name rate, we have to kind of re-shift that. The nice thing is we redo it every year so we can kind of reshuffle that.
My bottom line question was just simply, how are we doing?
We're doing fine. The only thing I would say in caveat that is it doesn't contemplate solutions for the water plant.
And I think what, just one other point to make and maybe kind of settle, but I wanna make sure it's clear. The water fund does much more than just pay for hard things. It pays for the, how many employees are in the water plant? Eleven?
Yeah.
Eleven employees in the public works department who operate the water treatment plant as well as the water distribution system, the vehicles and equipment that need to be employed as part of it. The water fund sustains that whole portion of the village's public works operation.
May I ask a clarification, Allison? My understanding is, based on the way this was presented, option one existing in what exists in the water plant, is a long-term viable solution. Just a question of how much it costs?
Yes. Yeah, we think so.
Anybody else? Okay, before we turn to other business, let me just, let me just say, you know, this is a small village where we have big problems and big issues. I was so impressed with the materials and the presentation made by our staff. It makes me proud to do this. I feel lucky that you work for us in our town and I'm proud to associate with you. So to our presenters, that is, it's about easy issues, but we're at good hands and the hope is we'll be able to make the smart decisions and we're not embarrassed about the ten, fifteen, or fifteen years. Okay, thank you. Is there any other business? And if not, is there an option to re-chair? All in favor? We're chairing, thank you.